Good evening. For the record, this is a public meeting for the Florence County Water and Sewer District. And I'll give you a little bit of background here of why we're having this meeting. We've recently had some new members on the board secretly but recently elected by acclamation in the county election as myself, Matt Brainerd, and Margie O'Brien and Judy Sasse have been directors now for a year or so. Two. I guess that's enough. Oh, so, okay. And our president, Ray Thompson, is not here tonight. I'm the vice president, so I'll act as the emcee, I guess, for this large crowd. Essentially, at a previous board meeting, I wanted to make a motion to reduce the annual levy on the properties in the district. We're now approximately $22,000 or something like that in total funds for the district that have been acquired over some time. And the history of the district is such that a reasonable person might conclude that there's no logical probability that we will accomplish either a water district, operating water district infrastructure, or a sewer infrastructure. And for that reason, it seems to me, as in the meeting, I'm going to make the motion to reduce the levy to zero. We have no infrastructure. And in order for the board to actually change rates, we have to have a public meeting to discuss that. So we don't have a huge group here tonight, so just if somebody wants to introduce themselves, say what they have to say, we can get this started. And does anybody want to make a public comment at this point in time? Okay.
Well, the group of funds put together in the idea that there was going to be a sewer down a water system originally, wasn't that what the whole thing was about? And then whether there are grants or something that we had to pay off or something that we had gotten?
There were a number of things. Did you get one of these?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just read through this.
Just kind of explain what the money is about, maybe.
Sure.
If I've kind of forgotten, if you rewind over.
Sure. Essentially, I'll run through this. In 1978, the district was established by eligible voters within the district boundaries. 1980, the district began actions to establish a community water system. These actions include the consideration of HUD applications, request of the Old West Regional Commission, and acceptance of $20,000 from the Rural Water Office of the Old West Regional Commission. 1981, district commenced studies, including the Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology Water Resources Evaluation and a preliminary engineering study by S&amp;D Engineering out of Helena, Montana. Somewhere between 1981 and 1985, in that ballpark. And I've gone through records that I've got, letters and public meeting formats and things like that. That's how I put this together. There was information that the district voters defeated a $40,000 bond levy to implement that water system. Judy says, and she's very knowledgeable, she's been involved in a lot of this stuff, she said that it was never held that the board decided that they weren't going to hold the election or something. So I'm guessing there was a sentiment in the community that it was not going to pass, and so they just thought, okay, that's it. The result was that the board went inactive for a period of time.
Okay.
And Montana law says that the district stays in place. Okay, even though the board was inactive, the district still remained in place and until it is actually officially decommissioned by a petition of the freeholders in the district. Okay, and then you go through a protocol with the county commissioners and public hearings and things like that. That district stays in place until you go through that whole procedure, which was never done. Yeah, Howard?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
It talks about the fact that there was grant funding, everything short of $40,000. What was the original estimated cost?
I have no idea.
How much was the original grant?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
This was before.
Oh, this was before. They're after the water.
When they did the water study.
Thirty years ago.
Yeah. Okay. In 1993, a group of citizens got together and formed a task force to begin to reactivate the water and sewer district. Now, ongoing through this whole time period, for some properties in the district, there have been issues of contamination, cross-contamination from septic wells. We've had problems in the, initially, as I understand it, the initial thing to start a water district, some people didn't, weren't getting enough water out of the wells. We had some dry years, and when this didn't go through, they drove their wells deeper, et cetera. Anyways, 1994, Ravalli County informed the task force that approximately $950 remained in the old district account at the county level. Task force authorized Midwest Assistance Program to work with the Montana Department of Natural Resources to obtain funding for a groundwater assessment as a preliminary step to a community water system.
Sewer system.
Yeah.
Sewer system.
Sewer system, huh, sorry. Community sewer system. 1998, March 31st, three of the original five board of directors, Alan Mays, Bob Trout, and Carl Ostrom, served as board members to reactivate the board until new members were elected or appointed. Also, at this time, the Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology begins forms of water analysis, and they went around and sampled a number of wells, including well at my place. 1999, new board members were elected, included John Cornish, Margie O'Brien, Don Round, Creighton Sales, and Bob Trout. On May 25th, district board members adopted district bylaws. On June 18th, Neil Consultants submitted an engineering services proposal to the district. 2001, September, Neil Consultants submits a facility plan. 2002, January 28th, Creighton Sales resigned from the board. On February 19th, the board members appointed Matt Brainerd, that's me, to the open board position. Okay, 2002, March 25th, and things are starting to pick up steam here, okay? The board conducts engineering interviews. Neil Consultants of Great Falls was to be interviewed along with Anderson Montgomery Engineers of Helena, Montana, and Morrison Meyerly of Missoula, Montana. The board subsequently asked Morrison Meyerly to submit a draft contract for engineering services, and that draft contract is submitted April 26, 2002. May 8th, district is notified that the Mitchell property, three miles south Florence, along 93, that had been considered as a site for wastewater treatment, was ineligible because it was included in the local zoning district. The board terminated the option on the property, and the board got its money back on this. Okay, so at this point, there was no property to put a sewer facility on. Search was conducted for another suitable property, and on December 17th, the board made a successful offer to purchase 120 acres of undeveloped land immediately to west of the district boundary. That was the Shrek and Dust property, correctly behind my house.
Behind my house, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's up behind your.
Up behind my place, yeah, okay.
Okay. Now, it's not in here, but I'll just add a little bit, why the board went to that piece of property. First of all, there is virtually no way that by modern standards, environmental standards, that you are going to locate a sewage treatment facility along a major stream or major high groundwater. So the idea of running it down to the river like they did in Lolo, that's not going to fly in these states. That's not acceptable. To find a piece of ground in a developed area like this, okay, that's suitable for a sewer treatment facility, it has certain requirements. And you have to be really looking at the environmental aspects of all this to find that property, as well as distance and how you're going to get that. You know, the old systems were primarily gravity flow. The newer systems, a lot of them, because of where places are built and locations and that wind up pumping things. And in this case, that 120 acres, it was a pump operation. And we'll just say that by the time everything transpired, there was some resistance. Some people had environmental concerns, concerns about their property values and their quality of their wells and things like that. Move on to 2003, February 26th, the board accepts an engineering services agreement with Morrison Meyerly, who passed resolutions 3-03 and 4-03, basically cemented that contract. And from the time that the district was reactivated until 2003, there was correspondence for the number of entities, it's Montana DEQ, the NRC, Midwest Assistance Program, and the state and federal legislators, name just a few. And all this correspondence included studies and, you know, issues of grant money, loan programs for infrastructure and that. And Judy was coordinator for Midwest Assistance Program, and was instrumental in a lot of that grant application process and doing all that paperwork. She is, I would say, you know, in this room, in this county, probably the foremost expert on all that paperwork.
Well, Matt, she also got, in that paperwork, we were granted $6 million.
Yes, exactly.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Quite a huge amount that we got granted, because I came to one of those meetings that I had been.
That was free money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, during 2003, as the planning, engineering, and financing of the centralized sewage system began coalescing into an actual building project, a number of district residents expressed concern about negative impacts the facility might have on the community and water quality. You may have attended some of those meetings as well.
Yes, I hope we did.
Okay. 2003, November 4th, the Ravalli County election administrator conducted a mail ballot election for three board director positions and included an advisory poll listing three options for future development of a centralized sewage treatment facility. New directors elected were Richard Bouchite, Danny T. Williamson, and Christopher Anderson. The advisory poll, 86% were against development of the proposed facility in sight. 68% were against any centralized sewage and treatment facility for the district. So you had a pretty strong public vote against accepting what had been put together. So the new board of directors, Richard Bouchite, Danny Williamson, Christopher Anderson, Bob Trout, and John Cornish relinquished allocated grant monies provided to that date, and also took the necessary steps to pay incurred engineering fees. The district faced a tax obligation of approximately $75,000, and county tax billing for the sewer district increased accordingly to pay that off. Billing rates returned to $29 a year in 2006. Those are the records that I've got. Everything that I've got in here is drawn from a source that I had in hand to put this together. Now, from my point of view as a board member, it seems that the people in the district have been rather adamant about not becoming involved in a real centralized system. And at this point, I don't know why the board would collect any more money on a yearly basis from the people in the district with any hope of accomplishing. Yeah.
Do you have any stats on the, first off, the amount of population within the district? Is it like 200, 500, 10,000?
We have.
The last one was 254 properties, correct? 254, 255 in there. That's properties, that's not homes, that's properties, yeah. There's less than 700.
700 people?
People.
700 people. And on this election that gave a 68% against, does anybody have a percentage of how many votes were taken? 10, 50, 900?
Well, each voter.
Each freeholder.
Each voter.
Each voter.
Each voter in the district.
If you want to know, okay, if you want to know the mail-out ballot, there were 351 ballots mailed out.
351 mailed out.
252 were returned.
252?
Yeah. Good response.
Okay. Of that group, the option one, which was to continue development of the centralized sewage treatment facility at the currently proposed location, only 33 people voted in favor of that.
Out of the 252.
The option two was to cease development plans for the current location, but continue efforts to develop a centralized sewage collection and treatment facility in a different location. Only 41 people supported that. Option three was to cease any effort to create a centralized sewage collection and treatment facility for the district. 155 people opposed to cease.
Through this, I noticed that the last portion of it, there wasn't any mention about water.
Well, this is, I guess, the way that the sewer district and the board has looked the more current aspect of this. It's called a water and sewer district, because that's kind of what it falls into. At the time, the district was working on a sewer system, and with a sewer system, you can maintain the wells that you've got, okay? Whether there would have ever been a water system on top of that, I don't know. That really wasn't discussed in most of our meetings or anything like that. It might have come down to rope. Part of what you're looking at with all of this is the economy of scale. And when you begin to look at what the costs incurred, and this is one of the reasons why federal funding was available to do some of this stuff, because normally, small communities that are spread out like this, that don't have economy of scale, they're not wealthy or anything like that, very difficult to put in this kind of infrastructure. And I would say it was a rare opportunity that went by the wayside. And I don't think it's likely to return anytime soon with the present financial condition in the nation.
I know from experience of being in rural Alaska for many, many years, the federal government is going through and putting in sanitation throughout most of these rural villages, and it's all done under grant funding.
Right.
See, did you have a, I'm sure you did, a cost on this, and then what the grant funding was?
Six and a half million dollars.
Six and a half, and you got $6 million in grant.
Actually, we got $5.5 million. We would only have had to bond for $1 million. And part of the reason that that election, this way it was, there were an awful lot of the, there was a lot of information going out that was not true. And when you're a five-member board and you're on the defensive, and you've got people going door-to-door spreading untrue information, you're pretty much, your hands are tied. But we had a $4 million grant from the STAG program, which is the State and Tribal Assistance Grant. That grant is still available, that grant program, for $100,000. We could have had $4 million. Now, there's nothing given in that program more than $100,000. And so I don't see how we could ever afford to put one in with that grant money gone, you know, because it's going to cost six and a half million or more. And the grant money, they're gone, period.
The other issue primarily with all of this, I think, as a board member, is where would you put it? Where would you put that facility? And anybody who, in the Bitterroot Valley, establishing a modern community, it would only make sense to have located building structures now, a whole lot different than they were built over a period of time. So we have the Taj Mahal, and it's all throughout the valley. And my sense is, particularly for Florence and areas like this, something probably is going to be done in the future, but it's going to have to be done on a much bigger scale than our 254 properties in the immediate Florence area. You've got properties on the east side, you've got properties north and south of here, and the whole concept of groundwater and, you know, the basin and all those things are going to be tied together. And whatever you could cobble together now for this district does not begin to answer all the other problems that are here in the valley, and I don't know where you'd go with it. That property, that 120 acres that was rejected by the voters, that was one of the only properties, maybe the only property available.
There was one other mention of which was on the other side, that was the zoning problem?
That was south. And that was a piece of property that was being negotiated on, and even the owner, they'd inherited the property, and they didn't realize that it had been platted for subdivision by the previous owner. And so that plating subdivision, it was zoned as residential, and that was not going to be changed.
The neighbors all.
Change zoning.
Well, the neighbors had.
It takes some work.
Well, the neighbors didn't want to change it. It wasn't just the empty property in the zone, it was all the neighbors surrounding the area.
Surrounding area.
It was a large zoned area.
Steve?
Another thing that, I've always just sat back and watched, I've been on a number of properties in this area, but almost all meetings has come up to number one, the location, and number two, in order to do it economically feasible to pay for it after it's done, the district has to change. We have to make it. The other side of the highway has to be north and south. I mean, it's a whole, it's a lot bigger than just the 257 people or homes, because those folks can't afford what's going to be built, no matter who pays for it. Once it's done, you have to be maintained and whatever. So it has to have a lot more homes and people's properties involved than just what's here, and that was also a stumbling block in the past.
And the problem with including the five-acre plots across the river, they're going to pay five times as much as those of us with the residential property, because they've got to pay for that pipe running across those five miles to a house, and then another five miles to another house. So there are going to be any pay for that, I'm afraid.
Well, I think that probably that had a lot of reasoning, because a lot of it failed, was because people, it wasn't going to reach enough people, but still, the people that it didn't reach, it wasn't going to be feasible.
Well, a lot of people, excuse me, a lot of people I spoke to, because I wanted, I have stuff around here, and I just visit with the neighbors and stuff, most everybody felt of the people that I spoke to, my well and sewer is just fine, thank you very much. I don't want to cough up the money month after month after month to pay for something that's working now that I paid for it 15 years ago. And that was a real deep sentiment, and rightfully so. Some of those folks are limited income elderly, you know, it's within those 200, how many parcels do we have? So it was economically a hardship for them, when what they had was working fine and standing at that.
In the engineering report, the estimate of the total cost on a parcel of land in the district for the sewer that was designed would have been a little over $4,000 payable over 20 years. That fact was never allowed to get out to the people. That really isn't much money.
No.
When you bond for a million dollars with 250 parcels, it is about $4,000 over 20 years.
Yeah.
So you see, had the correct information, had an opportunity, the state agency that administered the STAG grant did not want that wording on the ballot. He said, "That's the worst, you're not going to get any votes with the way it's worded." But actually, the board didn't even get a chance to write that. It was done by the election officer and by someone here in town. So I think if people had been told, "Hey, you can't afford $4,000 over 20 years," you know, that's not much money.
Well, and increase the value of everybody's property.
Oh, much more than $4,000. Much more.
And created an actual community. I still own quite a bit of stuff on the highway. Two days ago, I had a guy wanted to buy a piece of property to build a really nice restaurant. It could happen in Ravalli County. I just told the public, no need to even come to Florence, because you can't do that on a septic system, period. So it's been a, it's also the future quality of the water and quantity.
The ground can only absorb so much contamination from septic tanks. And pretty soon, the wells are going to be, if they haven't already, there was a land analysis done several years ago, and I don't know what turned up then, whether it was just a few wells or a lot of them.
There are a number of things within the district. In other words, some wells are challenged, there are problems with them. One thing that you do have going on here, for better or worse, is because of the grout and the soils underneath, we have a rather fast-moving water system from the watershed back. And were you to, not necessarily look at the impact on each individual well, but if you were to look at a collection point further down, you might get a more accurate measure of what's going on, is where all that stuff is going. There are certainly, there are certainly some potential problems down the road. And the whole Bitterroot Valley, it's not just this area, the whole valley is in that situation, because this kind of development has gone on, filter, skelter, from small communities, small farming communities, and isolated farmhouses and things like that from the ag background, and then got discovered, and you started development here and the development there, you know. That's the history, and that is actually a limiting factor, probably, for a number of things, is what Steve was talking about, for further development, economic development in the valley as well. For better or worse, that's the way it is at this point.
And at one time, older Florence over by the old post office is at, I'm sure there's still a few assessable and not septic tanks. I know there are. And at one of the recent meetings a year ago, one guy said, "Well, could you do, take care of this by neighbor's yard, because it's laid on the ground?" And this was last year, so.
I bought a piece of property that had a car body for the septic system.
There's up behind me, there's a car body.
A car body. And out of the house into the top of a car.
Yeah.
And that was it.
There was up behind me.
Old Carter Town, there's, well, you can look at the pieces of property and envision a drain field, and there isn't any place for it.
and envision a drain field, and there isn't any place for it. No place for one, no room for one. But when you were asking before about the water, initially, the water was pursued because of quantity. Then, by the time the study was done, the study didn't say there's eight leaking drain fields and they're polluting the wells. Actually, good share of septic systems that are in do a good job. They treat the water before it gets to the groundwater table. But the cesspools, the car bodies, the concrete rings, which is a lot. And the new septics that are going in, in the last 10 years here in Florence, I wouldn't worry about those if it was me, because they're engineered. The company's been good on that. But if you put in a water system with all septic, or whatever systems have to be, you're going to have to treat that water to prevent it from bringing in the leachings from it. And a water system costs about twice as much as sewer system, and maintaining it is about three times as much as a sewer system. So when the sewer, when the water and sewer district decided to pursue a sewer system, it would have been the least expensive to construct, the least expensive to maintain, and it would protect the remaining groundwater. So that was the reasoning. And that's why, if you see in the paper where a lot of the stimulus money and stuff has gone to a lot of small districts for sewer, it's basically cost. They can put in a sewer system, protect the groundwater a lot cheaper than they can put in a well or a water system. You still got the septic system pollution if you have a water system. So that's kind of the thinking on that.
And I understand that completely. Well, I guess what tonight is, is just information, and you're saying that you want to disband, but basically.
This was on my motion during a meeting, and we discussed this. And in order for this board to make a, pass a resolution, what we're going to decide to do is necessary by state law, that we hold this public meeting and get your input, okay? And whether there's four here or 400, this is the meeting. And we'll do the best we can on this. But that's how it got started, that's why there's a meeting, is because I wanted to make the motion. And honestly, I was hoping we'd have a room full of people in there.
Yeah.
And I've been to meeting after meeting years ago, and I haven't been for a long time. This is a crowd.
And what about, what do you think about keeping? Now, you paid $20 the last tax year, but it's now been brought to the attention of the board, that the previous board did not hold a public hearing to change it. So next tax year, if we don't lower it or eliminate it, we get $29.
Okay, and what is the dollar revenue for the district in one year?
Well, $29.
Roughly close to $7,720, something like that.
Only $7,200. That's not enough to even maintain the facility.
If you had a facility.
If it was long built, it wouldn't be enough to maintain it. You couldn't pay the electricity.
No.
You'd have to pump it up there for it.
Under a situation where we had an actual collection system in a sewage treatment plant, we would be discussing the operating rates, okay, and what it would cost. And obviously, you know, you're probably looking at more like, probably $30 a month or something like that as a utility payment on your sewer in a situation like this. But that's a guesstimate, because it all depend on the costs and et cetera. But you would have, for example, like Lolo, the community of Lolo actually has a viable sewage treatment plant, and they've got an employee or two, and people pay accordingly. And that's what it could have, should have, but that's not what we've got. We've got nothing in the way of infrastructure. And a current charge of $20 a year, and the likelihood that it will go up to $29 for nothing.
Legally.
Well, it looks, just my quick opinion, I've just got involved in this. I got a letter, and it did a little dark in the round in tonight's information meeting, which there was a lot of information listening. I think that without the possibility of some tremendous grants out there, and there are some good grant writers, you know, I don't know where that all's going, and I don't want to enter that picture, but without tremendous grant support to get this done, the fee that's being collected for the district isn't enough to do anything with. And I think what you're saying is, you're up against a hard spot that you can't get through.
Well, I wouldn't even put it that way. I would say that the hard spot was reached several years back. And what you're really looking at is not only what went on inside the community and the backing for the project and things like that, okay? But the real genesis of this, and you can talk to all the people that write the grants and everything like that, you have to have someplace to locate your facility.
Yeah.
And that has to be environmentally in the ballpark, as well as economically in the ballpark. And when you look around and see what we've got going on here in the valley, and particularly for this small district, there is no place. And this 120 acres that we had got the option of.
Right.
There was a lot of criticism about where that was located, okay? And fact is, that was it, there wasn't anything else. And there were ways to mitigate the risk and some of the objections, but fact is that there were going to be no grants. There wasn't going to be anything until a piece of property was located. And that's a huge deal, because as soon as it was found out that the one area was under zoning, everything started to fall apart. There was a real sense of urgency in finding a new piece of ground.
And if I get around, part of the information that came through this process about that 120 acres was all faced lies of, started of a guy that wanted his property to be the new property. He'd gotten a whole bunch of people incited that didn't take the time to do the research to find out if it's the real information that made it very difficult for the board at that time to even have a meeting. It was a disaster.
And I'll interrupt for a minute. It looks like, you know, the bench over here, then it goes down, there's a lot of open land there, water table's way too high.
Yeah.
So that was out of question.
That's all that's in the spring.
Yeah, so that was, you know, it looks like it's good, but it isn't.
Yeah, no, no. And I realize that too. What is the amount of acreage needed for this?
That original property was, they looked at for the lagoon and the treatment facility was about 35 acres, 35, 40 acres. The district did not physically need the 120 acres, but that was the only way that the district was going to acquire the amount of land that they needed, was to buy the whole parcel.
And it depends off on the type of disposal. Up there, they were, the engineering firm recommended that it be used for irrigation on the balance of the land, that the effluent be used for irrigation, because there's no houses there and there's no... And, you know, I don't know if you've ever driven by Reed Point, but there are two sewage lagoons, they're right on the highway, they're right on the football field, and they irrigate a field right in front of this house, and now four new houses are there. So the, again, the information that was coming out was very difficult. You know, some people don't want to know the truth, because they already know the truth.
Oh, yeah.
They think. And it reaches also irrigate, yeah, they irrigate forests. So there was an opportunity to plant and to use the water, but.
During this time, I went to stop by a place in Belgrade, and it's a privately-owned housing development with places for sale, condos, a variety of residences. And they have their own private sewage facility there. And it is right in the community. And about once a year, when the temperature and inversion of the water, one thing and another, there's a point there for about a day or so where there's some odor. And the rest of the year, the residents live a very long time, and they, there's no problems.
They can't be getting worse, they're all term of the year.
So.
Totally different treatment.
But all that being said, we come back to what is, and.
Is that property still available?
No.
No.
It's gone.
It was sold a week after it turned back to a developer. Plotted 93 homes, I believe, and 93 septic tanks.
93 homes.
So there are homes built?
No, not yet, no.
No, but it's locked up.
But that plant is available.
Actually, what they did. If you have a property around that's reasonably close, it could be a team.
Take that board search, we even went halfway up the mountain. We thought of Lolo and Stevensville set sewers, you know? Too much to pipe.
Another comment I might make, because this is only my, through being on the board, and I've got a copy of the bylaws. And in the bylaws for this district, it says, "The purpose," under the purpose of the district, it is the duty of the district and each district director to pursue the feasibility of constructing and maintaining a water and/or sewer system within the district. And over all the years that we've been trying to do this, that hasn't happened. And to continue, in my opinion, not necessarily as a whatever the hell I am, is, I don't think that I want to pay more money into the sewer district for something that's probably never going to be built, and keep these people coming to meetings every month for a purpose that there isn't.
Well, or the expense of having a meeting and all that kind of crap, but yeah.
And to have four people out of 257. Well, but to have four people walk into a meeting that has as much... I was 133 to vote for. I had a whole pile of commercial land. I'd love to have built something in Florence that was really nice, and you cannot do that. So I was 133 that would love to have that sewer system here. And I wasn't very popular.
Neither was I.
But at the same time, I think it's a waste of the community's time for the people that, it's good for their property values. There's a whole bunch of things positive for it, and they don't care to even throw up a meeting. So why are we spending our wheels month after month, year after year after year?
Did everybody pick up the financial half piece? Okay, because that does say where the money's gone, and it really has.
I would also offer this, I guess, as a viewpoint as a taxpayer and a resident here, and involved in various things related over the years. When you have a form of government, which this board is, and you have taxes and money in an account, things don't remain static. This board cannot impose on a future board what they're going to do with that money. Now, in the bylaws, our bylaws, we're technically allowed to appropriate $80 apiece for a salary, which we've never done, but that's in the bylaws. Now, if you had an ongoing sewer district where you're meeting all the time, you know, people are actually putting a real time into it, maybe that's worthwhile then, I mean, government does all this kind of stuff. And I guess the one thing I would say is, is that unless there is a coherent plan or a strategy to do just what Steve was talking about, pursue a sewer and water district and the infrastructure, every dollar that goes into the kitty, sitting there with a change in membership for them to come along and arbitrarily make it to say, "Well, let's do this one, let's do that one," and never actually get to the systems that we're talking about. And one of, I was thinking, and I don't want to get tied up into this very much at all, no. There was talk at one point of trying to turn this into a, what I would call, a socialist assistance for maintaining your septic system. And diverting money from everyone to assist certain individual and their particular facility. And that really is not in the state code as part of what this board should be doing. Very adamant in the state code that every, I don't want to call them ratepayer, but every individual being served by the district is to pay the cost that they incur. In other words, the sewer system, we had a sewer system in, yeah, that's a collective amount, but anybody that adds into it has to pay their share to become attached to the system, you know? It's not going around and saying, "Well, we'll take money from this person, this person," and charge. Everybody's going to pay, a lot like a utility. You're going to pay for what you use. You're going to pay the cost and the cost of operation and things like that. So my experience with these kinds of things is that co-ops and utilities and city services are not what you would call worried about being fair, but they're worried about being equitable. They're not going to worry about what you take home. And so, for example, if you see most of the assistance programs that are tied up with Montana Power or Northwestern Energy now, and/or co-ops, you will see that whatever they have for assistance for the elderly and people of low income, it comes from a different source. It does not come out of their rates, what other people are paying in. It's from donations and grants and other money from the site that is used to mitigate those costs people can't pay for. And that's a whole different thing. But we have seen in the past now, board members who thought that they could do that with the funds here. And to say, anytime that you leave something dangling out there like this, you don't know what it's going to turn into.
Point, and this is something that made me say, it was in a piece of paper I've seen in many years, and I'm going to share it. It was a proposed budget for 2011, put together by an individual person not on the board, that was presented to the board for the budget for 2011. They had $6,300 proposed for office. They had travel, they had liability insurance, they had legal fees. Operation and maintenance, they had $12,000 proposed for maintenance. And of that, they had $1,500 for water testing. They had $10,000 for septic maintenance. Now, who in the hell was going to decide who's well they were going to test, who's sewer they were going to pump? And that was actually presented to this board by a person. In fact, Bennett, I didn't get any part of that. But that's just exactly what Matt is saying, it could happen. And that's why I am the one that would like to see this go to zero and then go from there.
How about a show of hand? Who wants to keep it or who wants to?
Well, I just invite further comment for now. You know, a couple of folks have been sitting here and did not say anything to that. Even Mike over there has been quiet tonight. So you usually are, yes. Sir?
Bud, you've been there forever, what do you think?
What do I think about what? I can't hear.
What do you think about keeping the tax for the sewer?
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero. A waste of money and a waste of time. A waste of money and a waste of time. It's never going to work.
We don't have the land to decide for it anymore.
No.
Optional. So why wouldn't we keep the funds in there? If we took them out, where would we put them? Or would we apply them? Would we reinstate them to the taxpayers or would we use them for other uses?
I think we need advice on how to do that. That's what I'm, I'm assuming will be done, but I don't know how that's done.
Once we get them to the.
What's about 22,000?
22,000.
Plus another seven, right?
Well, we'll have to.
There'll be almost.
22,442.
Well, the only way you can do is get the best people paid it. There's no question.
Well, that's another public hearing.
In order to do that, there's a process to do that. But this, this meeting tonight, if I understand it, is to get the input to see if that's what the people out there want to do. And if that's what they want to do, one of the next, one of the next things we would do is to pursue how to get the money back to the people that it came from.
Again, I don't see where's your problem.
Well, under state law, there's a process. There's no problem, it's a process.
Well, just.
Yeah. Well, you got to sign a petition saying you want to close the district.
You're damn right.
And that'll take care of that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll hold you to it.
Are there any further comments?
Ron, what do you think?
Well, I, I really feel like you guys have tried really hard to hang on to this, to do right, you know, what was a right thing. And it didn't work. So I think now we need to, basically, in my opinion, is go forward and shut it out. And so, you know, that's a forward thing in my opinion. And if there's ever a need for another time to have a board, I'm pretty darn sure there's one could be a reform, you know, and start over. But at this point, I don't see a point in keeping and hanging on to it.
Does everybody here feel that they've had the opportunity to express their opinions? I would, for the record, I'd like to read in a letter from Jeanne Carroll-Mann. Dear Board of Directors, I am sorry we will not be able to attend your meeting on Friday, December 9th, as we will be out of town for that weekend. We very much wanted to hear the discussion regarding your topic of the meeting and the history of how the FCW and SD came to be. Our only comment or concern would be, if the SCW and SD does not have a long-term goal for the funds they are collecting, what is the purpose? Long-term means if there are no plans for installing a sewer and water system, then give the $22,560 back to the folks that was taken from and abandon Florence County Water and Sewer District. It's that simple. Yours truly, Jeanne Carroll-Mann.
That's really, we're all pretty much in agreement.
And with that as a part of the public record, this meeting is closed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.